Welcome, everybody. We're so happy to have you here this evening. Well, this is the Neighborhood Passions Affinity Network presented by Google and Neighbor to Neighbor. I'm Valerie Otinella, your host for this evening. So tonight, we're going to focus on one of the eight neighborhood passions, preserving our neighborhood. And our topic is an introduction to the Metro Historic Metro Historical and Historic Zoning Commission. That's a mouthful. So here in Nashville, there are two commissions, which guide the historic preservation projects in metropolitan Nashville and Davidson County. So it's the Metropolitan Historical and the Historic Zoning Commissions. So tonight, we're going to take a look at both of these bodies and discover the unique roles they play in preservation, and how they can support the work that you're doing in your neighborhood. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Tim Walker, the Executive Director of the Commission, to give us all the information we need to know. Tim?
Thank you, Valerie and Jim. Really appreciate the opportunity to do this tonight. And thank you, everybody, for attending. A lot of people I know, in fact, one of my commissioners is actually on in the meeting too. So that's great. And just to start off, since everybody else talked about where they lived, our office is actually in the 12th South or Waverly Belmont neighborhood. And I actually live in the Lockland Springs neighborhood. So I live what I work. So really, really, again, appreciate everyone for letting me be here. The Metro Historical and Historic Zoning Commission, not many people get that right. Not many people know that we're more than one commission. So Valerie, you're way ahead of the game. I want to put together a little PowerPoint. I want to walk us through that because there's a lot of things that we do that most people don't realize we do. As I said, most people don't even realize we have two separate commissions. Well, again, thank you for having me tonight. Again, I'm Tim Walker, the Executive Director of the Metro Historical Commission and Historic Zoning Commission, two separate commissions in our office. The commissions are very different in what they do. The MHC or Historical Commission is more of an advocacy commission. They help to educate the public and they advocate for historic preservation. That's the original commission that was created in 1966. Really, it came out of the city's desire to really promote and commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Civil War in Nashville, having a lot of educational events around that, beginning in 1960. And at the end of that, they felt like the city leaders felt like it was so important to continue that work. They created our office, the Metro Historical Commission. The Historic Zoning Commission came 11 years later. And it's a time when local zoning had been approved statewide. And so different cities or local governments were creating local historic zoning commissions. So they could put in local historic zoning districts. It's a regulatory board. It's a board of nine, where the Historical Commission is a board of 15. So one is really advocacy and education, and the other is a regulatory board. You know, I've noted some of the things we do. We work with the Planning Commission in help of preservation planning. We help to manage federal programs, local government programs, outreach and education. And we advocate and have partnerships, what I'll talk about a little bit later. And again, the Historic Zoning Commission, it oversees and regulates the local historic zoning districts. I'll get to that in a little bit. And we assist other metro departments with their city-owned historic properties. So one of the things that we've been doing since the 1980s is we help the Planning Department with what we call preservation planning. Our office goes out and you may know the county is divided into 14 subareas or community plans. And in each of those, we assess and know all the historic resources in those areas. It's a big county, over 500 square miles. There are a lot of roads. And so that's an ongoing process. And it's always changing. Things that might not have been historic five years ago, you know, they're old enough and they're now historic. So we're going back and checking those things. And unfortunately, things that aren't protected, we do lose. They are demolished and we lose those properties. And so we note that too. But that's something we do as a part of the community plan updates, those public meetings that are held by the Planning Commission. And we go out to those meetings and make sure we haven't missed anything. We present what we have and we try to update them at that time. As part of preservation planning, there's some terminology we use that denotes historic resources. And one is called National Register. If it's listed, it's called National Register Listed. That's a federal program and federal criteria. It's kind of the highest level. It meets those federal standards. And the other is National Register Eligible. It meets that criteria, but it hasn't gone through the official process to be listed. And then there's something lesser we call Worthy of Conservation or WOC. Those are things that are something we keep an eye on. It may be a neighborhood. Maybe it's not old enough to meet that criteria right now. Maybe it's had some alterations, but if those alterations went away and it went back to its original form, you know, it might meet that criteria of being National Register eligible. But that's some of the terminology you might hear if you watch a planning commission meeting, or you attend one of our meetings. And as I said, there are federal programs that we help to manage. One is the National Register of Historic Places. And so much that we are reviewing National Register nominations. Sometimes we write those National Register nominations for properties in Davidson County. And we provide a recommendation to the State Review Board. We have a contract and we help to weigh in on Section 106. It's part of the National Preservation Act. And if there are federal monies used in a project, when there is federal money using a project, whether it be a road project, whether it be a riverway, you have to assess the impact on historic resources. That's a federal requirement when there's federal money. So we weigh in on that. There are federal grants we sometimes get. Usually those are from the Tennessee Historical Commission. It's passed through them that we apply for, which which help preservation projects in Davidson County. And then there are tax credits, the 20% tax rehab credit. The people occasionally help, we take and we help with that program. It may, it's one of the, if something's listed in the National Register, they can take that tax credit and write that off. 20% of the project value, they can write that off and over a five-year period, and it makes preservation more viable. It's a real incentive. Talked a little bit about the National Register of Historic Places. And there's a forum there down to the left. Again, that's something that the State Review Board reviews and it goes to the National Park Service. That program's been in place for many, many decades. And now the documentation is excellent. They require when you list something and it's of great value. The history is researched in great detail. And that happens. In fact, Davidson County, I think, has more properties listed in the National Register than any county in Tennessee. And we do a lot of outreach and public programming, which I'll go into in more detail, but everything from the conference, Nashville Conference on African American History and Culture, which took place at the beginning of February, our annual preservation awards program, our Old House Fair, which is more happening online than in person now, but that's something that used to happen annually. Doesn't always happen every year. We have a historical markers program, not unlike the State Historic Markers Program. Ours was put in place the second year of the Commission was started in 1967. And we now have over 200 markers around the county. Very, very, a program that lots and lots of people like that marks historic events or places or people. And then we do a lot of tours and lectures and workshops. And I'll just go into a little bit more detail. This year was actually the 40th Annual Nashville Conference on African American History and Culture. We partner with TSU and have since we started this program in 1982, I believe. And actually, Fisk is a big partner in this too, but TSU is the main partner. And if you haven't attended this, it's a very minimal cost. It's a whole day program normally, except for this year was about two thirds of a day because of COVID. We had it virtual for the first time, but it's a wonderful program. And I always learn so much at each program. And it's not just papers people are giving about subject matter, but as its title, it's history and culture. So you might see a play, you might see a musical performance. It's more wide-ranging than most conferences like this. But if you haven't attended, again, it's a minimal cost and you'll learn so much from it. So I encourage you to do that. And if you go to our website, you can actually watch the conference. We have this past conference up. You can see it for free. And soon we'll have all of the past conferences up over the last 20 years. So you can go back and learn something. Our longest program is our annual preservation awards program. This will be the 47th Annual Preservation Awards Program, which will take place in early May. May is National Preservation Month. That's why it takes place then. And as you can see, these are some of the older programs from different awards years. They're coming up. It's a program that really recognizes good projects, whether it be maintenance of a historic building, whether it be infill construction that's compatible with the historic structures in a neighborhood, or whether it be an addition that's done properly and doesn't adversely impact the historic structure. We award people, we encourage people to do that kind of work. And this awards program is a way to do that. So if you haven't seen that, that's also something you can check out on Metro YouTube and see some of the past winners. And you can see some of them here. Jubilee Hall and some commercial structures in Phil, I believe, on Fatherland Street and Lockland Springs. I think that's actually a little Neo Tudor and Richland West End. So good projects. And then here is some shots from the Old House Fair that we've had for about a decade. Again, this is helps individuals. We have classes as a part of this where people can learn the do's and don'ts about renovating your home. They can find craftsmen or contractors that specialize in this kind of work. And so people find it very helpful. Our Historic Markers Program, as I mentioned, started in 1967, the second year of the Commission was in place. And again, we have over 200 markers and they mark significant places, buildings, events, and people that are important to our national history. And that program's always expanding. We put out several markers a year. So something, and I'm going right into this, as we talk about partnerships with different groups, our office has worked originally with the Parks Department and starting to create friends groups for historic city-owned properties. The first one our office created with Parks Department was Friends of Warner Parks. We're not very engaged with them now. They are a very active group that have some real leadership. In fact, they have paid staff. If you ever go out to Warner's Park, they've really made a great contribution to that site over the last 30 years. But other nonprofits we've created or co-created are the District for Downtown Nashville. It's for the historic districts in downtown. Second Avenue, Broadway, Printer's Alley, Fifth Avenue. That was something that was patterned on something called a Main Street Program for small towns. It didn't apply to large cities. So this was our interpretation of that. A nonprofit that was put in place in the 80s to really help turn downtown around when no one wanted to be downtown, when it was a scary place to be, at least for some folks. And that was put in place and the district's done lots and lots of the years to help promote and turn things around downtown. And these are just some of the events are put up on the screen, whether it's wine in the winter. They're programmed now to raise money for Second Avenue to make it better than ever. Lots of things like that go on with the district and our office still sits on that board in an ex officio capacity. The Nashville City Cemetery Association, the Nashville City Cemetery at Fourth and Oak, just south of downtown, is the county's oldest public cemetery. The cemetery is maintained by Metro Parks, but it's managed by our office. That was given to our office by the Parks Board in the 1980s. We helped co-create a nonprofit that supports it. They have helped to raise money to pay for repairs. They have advocated for the site for a capital spending plan that Mayor Purcell put in place that helped to make much-needed repairs at the site. And they hold a lot of educational events, like a living history tour. This generally held every October. So they've done a lot of great things to help promote the site and make it a better place, a place people can enjoy. And we said ex officio on that board. Friends of Two Rivers Mansion, they've only been around for a little over a decade, but Friends of Two Rivers Mansion, again, it's another park property that we co-created, the Parks Board and our office, Parks Board staff in our office to help to do the same there. And they hold events, capture funds from events, they put right back into the side, everything from creating a maintenance fund to help pay for the repainting of that large structure, all the woodwork, repairing, painting of the woodwork, which they do every eight years, to interpretation and a lot of programming, whether it be tours that you take in the summer or events that are happening on the lawn. It's a great benefit to the community. And it helps to make sure the site's better maintained. Another friends group that we helped co-create is Friends of Fort Negley. They've been around for about 10 years and came around in a very pivotal time when development was encroaching on the site. And they've done a lot of great things, especially with education and the park staff that's at the site, at the visitor center. And they have helped to get grants and supported the site mainly with programming and events and advocating for it. A more recent one that's only a few years old, about five years old, is Friends of Otterfama Archaeological Park. It's on the southern end of the county, off of Hillsborough Road at Oak Hill Creek Boulevard. It's a Native American village that has now a metro park. And you can see here a master plan that the Friends Group paid for that will is currently being bid out and will be built out in the next couple of years so that school groups and the public can start to utilize the site and find out about the Native American village that was there and the lives they lived. Yet another friends group we helped create that was actually earlier this week, on Tuesday, was approved by the Parks Board, a brand new friends group is Friends of Fort Nashboro. That is, Fort Nashboro has been in that location where the current Fort Nashboro History Center is since the 1930s. It was put in place thanks to the Daughters of the American Revolution or DAR. The DAR worked very hard as a part of a, really part of a national preservation movement to recognize history, especially Revolutionary War history and early American history. And this site was built at that time. It's, this is the third rebuilding of it with what took place just a few years ago. What you see in the center photo there, it's not yet completed. And this friends group hopes to advocate that the city finds the funds to complete the construction. So this can be open to the public and utilized and people can find out about Nashville's early history and the history of the fort. And it can be used by school groups. I, for one, as a kid, went here when it was still open in the 70s. And it was a great place. I still have good memories of that. But yet another friends group. So we've worked over the years with the Parks Department mainly to create these friends groups because they carry on and work and advocate for these sites. And it really makes a difference to our city. Finally, we have our own local nonprofit for the office called the MHC Foundation. The MHC Foundation really helps the office by raising money to help us with projects that wouldn't be funded otherwise. Everything from writing National Register nominations to interpretive signage at historic sites, to programming, to events, and to their major project, which is called Nashville Sites. It's a website that works like a app. It's a mobile-friendly website that works like an app that gives you free tours of Nashville's historic and cultural sites that are theme-based. And it's all free and audio is a part of it. And so if you haven't checked that out or don't know about it, please, after we finish tonight, go to www.nashvillesites.org and check it out. You can take tours, everything from early black life and culture to women's suffrage. There are several architecture tours in the city. It really, really runs the gamut, civil rights. There's a civil rights sit-ins tour. You can really find out a lot about our city's history by checking that out. And I think you'll find it very engaging. And then, of course, a lot of this falls in the line of heritage education, but the Davidson County historian, who is now Dr. Carol Bucy, she, we work with, she works out of our office and we do a lot of heritage education, mainly working with school groups, with the annual Tennessee History Day, but also giving tours and creating history lessons, especially associated with Nashville sites for skilled children to learn more about our city's history. Then, of course, we, there are other tours, workshops, conferences, lectures, and a number of community events that we're a part of. And going to put some glasses on so I can see what I'm looking at. But everything from lectures in the upper left-hand corner that the county historian gave. She does a couple of Nashville history series, and this is one, I believe, in the upper left-hand corner that's at Two Rivers Mansion. We typically have had a booth at Oktoberfest, the center pitcher. We've given many tours of the city cemetery in the lower pitcher in the middle to neighborhood tours, like the one on the far, like bottom left. So we're always doing things like that, helping. Think in the upper right-hand corner is picking a Buchanan Station, Buchanan Station Lockhouse. And we've helped them with their programming too. So always trying to get out there and engage the public to learn more about our city.
Tim, two minutes.
Oh, wow. Wow, that went fast. Again, I'm going to fly through this because I'm not nearly close to being finished. This just shows some of the special projects we've done. I won't waste any time, but I did want to talk a little bit about the other arm. In fact, it's the regulatory arm, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. The Metro Historic Zoning Commission is a design review board. And it oversees local districts that are designated in our city by providing protection and managing growth in those neighborhoods. Historic zoning overlays, we actually have 31 historic zoning overlays and over 50 individual landmarks. And the Metro Code provides provisions for designating those local districts, creates this local review board, or the MHCC, a board of nine, whose makeup is very specific. And it gives a criteria for adopting design guidelines, which it requires me, the federal standards, Secretary of the Interior standards. So historic zoning overlays, it's a great tool. In fact, we have over 11,000 properties, individual properties in the county that are in historic overlays and protected. The neighborhoods that several of you live in that are a part of this call, everything from Edgewood, Lockland Springs, East End, Eastwood, Greenwood, Maxwell Heights, to Richland West End, Cherokee Park, Hillsborough West End, Belmont Hillsborough. It just runs the gap at Woodland and Waverly, South Music Row, and of course, downtown Broadway and Second Avenue and the downtown historic overlay district. And how can I forget Germantown, since we have a couple of people from Germantown here. But it's a way, you know, historic zoning overlays, in most cases, they provide great benefit. They make, property values are maintained. And in most cases, they're actually increased in historic overlays. Protects the property owner's investment. And it's, provides tourism. People are gravitate to those neighborhoods because they represent an era, part of our history. And I'm sure I'm running out of time, but as you can see, there are two main types of historic overlays, or preservation zoning, more restrictive, and the neighborhood conservation zoning district. And they do protect historic properties, prevent demolition of viable historic properties. Both of them do. We review new construction to make sure it's appropriate and scale, meets design guidelines and doesn't adversely impact the character. And this just goes into a little bit more detail about what the specific types of districts do. So I'll end with that. So.
She wants to know, is Jefferson Street included in the planning?
All of, as far as preservation planning through the Metro Planning Commission, all of the counties included in that where we weigh in. In fact, we review all applications to go to the Planning Commission and provide a recommendation. Jefferson Street isn't a historic overlay, except a small portion of it from Eighth to Fourth, the north side of Jefferson Street. It's part of the Germantown Historic Overlay District. But there are great, certainly Jefferson Street is a historic street and there are a lot of historic buildings still on it, all the way out to TSU. But I don't know if that specifically answered a question, but it's certainly something we're reviewing through the Planning Commission.
George, I see your hand up.
May I? Tim, you mentioned working with parks?
Yes.
And the Planning Commission does have a design, something or other on Jefferson Street underway now. How closely do you work with planning in Jefferson Street or other areas to be sure that your vision and the friends' vision and everybody's vision is a part of Nashville Next and the whole planning process?
We're definitely a part of that process. As I said, we'd be a part of any, and it's probably you know, what type of, what they're proposing for Jefferson Street specifically. I know there have been a lot of planning commissioners looked at Jefferson Street as has the Nashville Civic Design Center. But certainly, we're a part of that process and they do engage us. Anytime there's a community plan update or their design overlay, we're a part of that. And we're asked to weigh in. And we're going to help them identify all the historic resources that are in that area. So that the policy that they develop, you know, takes that into account and hopefully tries to protect them.
Thank you. George, will you use your hand up?
There we go. I have clumsy thumbs. I'm very happy to follow Ed on his question. But thank you, Tim, for the presentation. And out here in White's Creek, we are proud, I believe, to have what is Davidson County, if not Middleton, it's only rural historic district, nationally registered. So I guess my question was, if something is nationally registered, does that mean that it's automatically a part of what your commissions look at for protection? Or is there maybe some division between just because it's on the National Register? The regulatory arm of the commissions is not necessarily as involved, Design Review Board, is there some step to get it to that? And then, second of all, because it is a rural historic district, is there something where the commission would look at, say, viewshed protections or rural type of overlay in the future, working with property owners, that kind of thing? Thank you very much.
Of course. Happy to answer that. And you're right, it is the county's only rural historic district. It's such a very important area that's really under threat of development. Other people know how desirable it is. Great quality of life out there. Being listed in the National Register does not protect it and it does not require the Historic Zoning Commission to review any work out there. We are involved with, through the Planning Commission. If someone asks for a zone change, or if there's community plan change for the area, we're going to be able to weigh in and make a recommendation of the Planning Commission. So we hope they'll want to do the same thing we want to do, protect the historic resources there. But you'd have to go through a historic overlay designation process with the council member. But you'd have to go through a historic overlay designation pro- process with the council member, which is fairly involved. And that's how we have to protect it. And as far as a view shed, it's certainly something, we don't have that tool here, but it's certainly something that's been talked about. And I'd love for us to create that tool. Would have to be created through the planning commission though.
And what is that tool you referring to? What was it?
Well, it's a tool that doesn't exist, but trying to create some type of overlay that protects view sheds. And creating a set of design guidelines around that.
Tim, we have a question. I'm sorry, Don. Go ahead, Don, and then I'll get the question from the chat room.
Sorry, it took me a minute to get my mic off. I have two things to say. One, does, um, does Davidson County have a historic commission that's separate than the Planning Commission? Or does this planning commission work on behalf of Nashville in general? And you just keep an eye out for historic issues?
So they are separate and that makes us very unique to most cities. I think the city, least large city that's comparable is San Antonio, Texas, where they have a standalone commission. So both the, the commission is a separate entity. We weigh into planning commission recommendations before the planning commission, we weigh into those as a separate department. Those recommendations and historic zoning program, which in some cities lives in planning, but ours is standalone and independent.
That's good to know. Here in Bedford County, we also have a separate historic commission outside of the planning commission. My second thing I just wanted to note is Robert Hoover and I are actually here on behalf of the AIA Mid Tennessee. We're tuning in to listen to, to just see what the group's all about and to let you know that we are here as a group. The AIA Mid Tennessee wants to let your group know that we are here in any way that you need us to just reach out. And just if there's any way specifically you feel that we could be of benefit to your group. To make sure that you reach out to either Robert or I to let us know what we could do for you. And maybe see if we could get the AIA Mid Tennessee on board with helping you in your endeavors.
Really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think that answered, Rob, maybe answered Robert's question, which was, what's the best way for people in general to get involved? And to support the MHC, Metro Historic Commission?
Well, a lot of different ways. I mean, you can certainly check out our meetings, both for the historical mission, historic zoning commission. If you, we have a monthly e-newsletter, you can find out what's going on by signing up for that. You can email us, you can email me and I'll pass it on and make sure you're signed up at tim.walker@nashville.gov. And I didn't mention it and I really meant to, but I had to skip over it. But there's a local nonprofit for historic preservation that's very important that we also partner with. They've been around almost as long as our office has. It's Historic Nashville Incorporated. And that's another organization that's membership driven, that does a lot of, of promoting. Of our local history and advocating for historic buildings and neighborhoods.
And their website is in our chat room, if anybody wants that website address.
Excellent. Thank you.
Before we get out of here, I think you'll be interested to know kind of the update on the bombing in downtown, where, where we are.
Well, I really appreciate the leadership of our mayor. The mayor, through the planning commission appointed Ron Gobble, an architect to be a point person for the rebuilding and repair of Second Avenue. And if you haven't seen it, and I believe they're online, Metro YouTube, but every two weeks there is an update of where things are. We're very hopeful that all the buildings will be repaired. And we, right now, most buildings are in some stage of repair. All except for four, the four that were closest to the actual bomb site. Those are still right now being stabilized. And so they're still in some question, but from at least two different structural engineers, independent structural engineers. They believe those buildings are salvageable and, and we believe that too. So the hope is, may take a while, but we'll get there and we really should see the whole street repaired in kind.
Which two buildings, which two buildings were the hardest hit?
Four buildings. It's actually one seventy to one seventy six, Second Avenue North.
Right.
It's part of a row about eight or nine buildings that were very badly damaged. Those probably took the worst hit, the way the pressure hit the buildings from the bomb. And so they, and ironically, they have one owner. So he's out of town, which I think complicates it to some point too. But we're very hopeful and that owner, as I said, is stabilizing the buildings now, which is the first step toward repair.
Well, thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate you all being here this evening. We want to encourage you to join us next Thursday. We'll have Jacob Apprecio from Oasis to be a part of us. Tim, thank you so much. We really appreciate this very informative session. And all of you who joined us, thank you so much for being here. Great questions and we'll see you next Thursday.
Thank you.
Great neighborhoods don't happen by accident. Thanks. Bye.